Now, to Councilmember Stiff's point, we'd like to call the special meeting to order for June 12, 2023. Will the city clerk please read the roll?
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you. We have one item for business to discuss. Now discuss the final adoption of the budget. You're done, right? So we're good. So would you go ahead and, city clerk, please read Resolution 2023-2318 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2023-2318 determining and adopting the final estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures for the City of Goodyear for fiscal year 2024, beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
Thank you. Do we have a motion in a second? We do. We have a motion second on the board. Any further discussion? I think we're discussing out on that, right? With that, go ahead and open the voting. Who's missing? Bill. All right. Pass 7-0. With that, it looks like we're coming here to the end. Next thing up is a work session item. Staff will pause intermittently for any questions. We will be receiving an update regarding the continuous improvement effort in our Development Services Department. Please introduce yourself for the public. Floor is yours.
Christopher Baker, DSD Director, and along with me is Katie Wilkin, Deputy Director of Planning. We're going to tag team this a little bit. So we're very delighted to be here this evening to have this opportunity to discuss and highlight our efforts regarding continuous improvement and lean, and to also, more importantly, tell our story and accomplishments. Katie's going to set the stage and give you some national context as well.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Making improvements to the development review process is a challenge that communities face across the nation. In a recent nationwide survey conducted by OpenGov, they found that less than one in three residents are satisfied with their community's permitting and licensing process. We've also seen this reflected on the state level on this legislative session with all the bills that were introduced trying to streamline the development review process. The development review process is not a Goodyear-specific challenge, which is why we see these national survey results in the activity at the legislature. However, the good news is that Goodyear is ahead of the game. We've already been on a path of implementing lean six sigma or continuous improvement here at Goodyear. A recent customer satisfaction survey found that 83% of our customers would choose to do business again with Goodyear. And we're going to go in more detail on this survey in a few slides. Goodyear was invited to present on the development review process to the State Housing Supply Study Committee last summer due to Goodyear's positive reputation in the valley. And just last week, at the grand opening of QuickTrip at Bullard and McDowell, they stated that Goodyear is by far the best city to work with of any city in the valley. However, even though we have much to celebrate, we know that there are also areas for improvement. So we aren't done yet. This is why we refer to lean six sigma as continuous improvement. And so what we're going to do with tonight's presentation is highlight some of the areas of how Goodyear has become a leader in the valley, but also what improvements we're currently working on and what's next on our agenda for improvement. The OpenGov survey I mentioned found four top challenges that communities find when improving the process, and we at Goodyear would also say these are our top challenges as well. And those include limited staff, and that might not just be staff positions, but even finding people to hire into staff positions and even availability with contract staff. Collaborating across departments and government entities. In Goodyear, that might include our private water companies, Luke Air Force Base, the Department of Transportation. There's lots of agencies that get involved in development review. Attracting or educating developers on codes and what we want to see built, and managing the permitting process with paper processes or outdated software. And related to that, OpenGov found that only one in two agencies allow online fee payment. And that's something else we're going to touch on in a little bit.
Thank you, Katie. Mayor, council, because the services that DSD delivers day in and day out are varied, and our customer base ranges from normal citizens to Fortune 100 companies, we really have to work in alignment and in accord with council's strategic plan. And what I just want to point out is a couple, if you'll indulge me for a moment or two, is how we align ourselves with the council's strategic plan. Under fiscal and resource management, DSD aligns by never stop improving services and focusing on processes. That's why we're here tonight, to tell you what we've accomplished recently. Under sense of community, we engage with our residents, vis a vis the general plan that we're going and updating right now, as well as through the normal development process, through neighborhood meetings and public notices and things of that nature. We also have to build effective partnerships, not only with other city staffs and other agencies, as Katie alluded to, such as our private utility companies and things of that nature, but also with the business community. Under economic vitality, we align by strengthening our local economy, working with our friends in economic development to attract and retain existing and new businesses. We maintain and invest in infrastructure through the inspections, the inspection, the review of the plans and the inspection process for horizontal improvements, such as roads, water, and sewer, to make sure that those meet codes and so forth, and that we're achieving high-quality built environment. And lastly, we also focus on the creation of jobs, again, in alignment and in partnership with our friends in economic development. Under the quality of life, we align by implementing the international building and fire codes to ensure that our community is safe. When people turn the light switch on, they're not going to get electrocuted. And when they turn the faucet on, there is appropriate water and all of that, right, to support development. We also take care of our environment by having a regulatory approach in some cases, such as flood zones and hillside protection, and then also aesthetics, such as landscape requirements. And if you remember, council passed some new landscape regulations a couple of months ago that revised how we approach landscaping, because we want to be very water-conscious in order to help our environment. So that's how that we structurally align with council's strategic plan. But we've also redefined how we see our processes over the years. We used to be just a collection of divisions, none of which could really see the big picture or even understood what was needed to approve projects overall. Now we see ourselves as a value stream that goes all the way from hello, from the introduction to the business or the resident that wants to construct something, to CO, which is a certificate of occupancy, which is what's issued after you're completed with your construction project. Each project, no matter how big or small, requires the collaboration and teamwork. So if I can point you to the pie chart, it starts here in many cases, as you can see my pointer, with business recruitment with our friends in economic development, and then also working through businesses who may want to expand or their operations in Goodyear as well. So we have to work with our friends in economic development there, and it moves, the project would move through planning and zoning, through the team at civil plan review, building safety plan review as well, and then issuing permits and inspections. Each one of these pie, pieces of pie, represent a different team that all have to work together to have a successful outcome for the customer. But we also know that value is determined by our customer, and they want the services when they want them in a very timely manner. And this is why we have set up processes to be predictable, flexibility, create flexibility, and also consistent, which leads us to, really, who are our customers?
In calendar year 2022, we process 7,000 projects and permits in the department. Less than 2% of those require action from city council. The rest are administrative. Of those 7,000 projects and permits, about 46% are home improvements, so existing houses getting improvements. Where 54% are residential commercial development, so like new ground-up construction, working with developers, home builders. To break that down a little bit further, of that 46% that's home improvements, a large chunk is residential solar. 20% of those permits are residential solar permits, and the other 26% is pools, ramadas, those kind of projects. 35% are commercial, which could be anything from a signed permit to a million-square-foot industrial building getting built. And then 14% are projects related to single-family, 5% multifamily. And again, with single-family and multifamily, there's a lot of different steps that it takes to bring a new subdivision to full construction. So then, touching based on that DSD customer survey that we did, we sent out 6,000 surveys to our customers that we've had over the last years. The survey included four yes-or-no questions and one open-ended question. We received 558 responses, which is actually a good response rate for a survey, and that represents a plus or minus 4% margin of error. Almost half of the respondents did provide us written comments, which is really helpful. And we received great feedback on our customer service, ease of process, and also a lot of great feedback on the future needs of our customers. 74% found that the experience was easy. 67% found that working with the Development Services Department added value to their project. 79% found that the communication the department gave them met their needs, and 83% would choose to do business again with the Goodyear Development Services Department. Trying to summarize all the written comments we received in this little box, we did see a lot about the need to simplify the online submittal process, providing more clarity of the process, a need for more staff availability, and the need for being able to take online payments. So with that, I'm going to give it back to Christopher, who's going to talk about how we're planning to address these items.
Thanks, Katie. So, excuse me. So what we want to talk about now is our efforts with continuous improvement and highlight some examples of things that we've accomplished recently. With continuous improvement, we have three main areas of focus. There's tools, there's processes, and then there's policy and council-driven improvements. And I'm going to share with you improvement stories and metrics for each one of these three types of different projects. But yet, it's really important to realize that continuous improvement is so embedded in the culture of DSD that our improvement muscles, and that's what we like to call them, right, flex every day, and there are just really simply too many stories, too many really great stories to tell and share with you tonight. So we're just going to highlight the ones that are relative to these. Continuous improvement is a process. It doesn't produce one single silver bullet that solves every and all issues. It is a methodology that is built on determination to achieve excellence. CI is at its core a series of incremental steps that build upon each other to create sustained and change in performance improvement. Sure, we could be like Sisyphus and push the rock up the hill, like you see here on the right. Each and every time, through sheer determination and effort, we would push every project up to its success, regardless of whatever it took. But why would we want to do that? Or we can simply just change ourselves and change our processes to make it easy so that we don't have to push up a hill at all. And we have done that in DSD by, number one, creating psychological safety, where the expectation is, is our staff people raise their hands when they have problems and challenges, whether it's understanding, having a challenge with a piece of technology, or with the system, or with a question on interpretation of codes, or waiting on an external reviewer, things of that nature. We want people to raise their hands and ask questions and bring it to our attention when there are problems. And that's what psychological safety does. It creates that environment of real-time communication and sharing of problems, because our employees cannot solve all the problems themselves. It oftentimes takes a team, or it does take a team every time, frankly. We also have to change how we work together, and I'll touch on that in just a minute. We also implement lean tools, because we need to have data in order to make effective decisions. And then last is that we have to change our behavior and what we do each and every day, engaging with our employees, being available, and working with them side by side in the trenches in order to solve problems. And it's through the addition of each one of these components that you actually would, that we actually result in sustained, long-term performance. So the first example I would like to share with you tonight is a system example, and it is the most powerful tool that we have implemented to date, frankly. It is the one platform, it gave us one platform to use and build from for all the other improvements I'm going to highlight tonight. Prior to electronic plan review, or what we call Project Docs, that's the system, we had three ways of conducting business in our department. Civil plan review was electronic. They got their work tasks through the computer. Planning was a hybrid. They got some things through email, and then they also had things come in in paper through the front counter. So a customer had to bring something to the city, give it to the front counter that would then get routed to the planning department. And building used to be 100% paper. That's what this picture is that you see on the slide. People would have to bring a roll of plans, come drop it off at the city. It would get routed to the building safety planner reviewers. They would redline it. People would have to come pick it up, go back to their office, make the changes, bring it back to the city. Planner reviewers would look at it. Hopefully, it's approved then, and then they would have to come pick up the approved plans and the permit. So because of the electronic system, we did away with all of that excess transportation, all of the having to come to the city, come back, and all this other stuff. So we've also made air quality improvement, right? So we had three ways of doing business in the department. As a result of that, there was really no way to check on project statuses, much less get any real or meaningful performance data, because everything was very much siloed. By now having everything in one system, it gives us the ability to data mine, track where projects are, generate reports, which then be used to identify even more improvement opportunities. It's also allowed us to set up different processes for different types of projects to make them super efficient. For example, the next example I would like to share with you is the express lane. This is an example of a process improvement, as I mentioned, that came directly from electronic plan review. This was set up for high-volume customary permits, like production homes, solar, as Katie mentioned. Rumors was 20% of our volume, and then also pools. Our old method of business meant that these were turned around in five or 10 days. Because the data now tells us that 62% of our permits go in and out of the express lane, we thought we could do better. So this is actual real data from '21, '22, and '23. And so how long does it take to get a permit through this process? Well, in 2021, it was four and a half days, but we realized we could do better, so we challenged ourselves. And then 2022, we got it down to 3.3. And now, I'm happy to tell you that within, so far this year, that our data statistically tells us with 95% certainty that we will issue your permit in two and a half days. Your question is, is, okay, well, that's great. Sounds good. That sounds pretty efficient, but how does that compare to other cities? Well, the survey says that we're 33% to 50% more efficient than other valley cities. But you don't just have to take my word for it, and these comments came from the customer survey data that Katie alluded to and discussed previously. Here are some quotes from some of our customers. BB Living is doing the project just immediately north of City Hall. They say the review times are by far much faster than any other city, and they've been doing this throughout Greater Maricopa for more than 10 years. The system is user-friendly and makes turnaround time amazingly fast. R World Energy, which is a solar company, the permits are issued within one to two days 99% of the time. Argent Solar, which I just pointed out not only serves Goodyear residents, but is also a Goodyear-based business, says, "Working with your team has been very pleasant. Only a few jurisdictions have express channels, but Goodyear is ahead of most of them." And then Rider Permit Services, they pursue pool permits and those other high-volume type of permits, as says that Goodyear has one of the best review times. So if you remember, previously, I said we had to change how we work. So this next example, example number three, is a process. How we work together is a process. And so our front counter staff, front counter and permit tech staff, now meet three times a day at 8:00 AM, 11:00 AM, and 2:00 PM. At each one of these quick huddles, they set goals for the day, assign tasks based on the volume that's coming at them. They distribute it and pivot based on the needs of our customers, our customer demands that day. And they raise their hands and ask questions for help and for solutions for real-time problems. They also set expectations amongst each other on what, who's doing what, and what are you getting out today? What are you going to be producing today? So all of this allows us to solve problems for our customers and essentially, real-time, and issue permits as most efficiently as possible. Another improvement I'd like to highlight for you, as example four, is a policy and council-driven improvement. If you may remember, in 2021, council approved some revisions to the subdivision regulations about when a preliminary plat had to come for approval. Essentially, it just changed the definition and the trigger when you needed to see things. And this was before we gave staff the administrative approval, so this was the first step to that process. We had a whole year, 2022, to look at that data. And what this one tweak to the regulations did is it saved 11 preliminary plats from having to come before you for approval, which means that we saved approximately 660 staff hours, saved a combined 280 days for our customers, and also saved our customers $13,200 in application fees that they did not have to pay to the city. Example five is a system improvement from the spring of last year, 2022, when we sought to find better efficiency and collaboration in the review of civil and building safety plans. Previously, this had been somewhat of a disjointed effort that wasn't coordinated as well as it could have been. The steps were sequential, which is what you see up here. It started with our friends at ECTEV recruiting a business, may go through the entitlement process, then it would go to site plan approval. After you get site plan approval, then it would go to civil, then it would go to building safety, then the permits were issued, inspections took place, all the way to occupancy. But in 2022, what we did is we collapsed these two and made it one process, so the customer turned in one set of plans. So what happened is, as a result of that, since they're no longer sequential, we ended up saving approximately 50 business days per project. We've had four projects move through that system, and this is the actual data. This isn't a guess. This is right at 50 days of business time, which means, okay, 50 days is 50 days. Sounds like a lot. But if you think about it, it's almost two months that these businesses were able to open up faster. They were able, we created those jobs sooner, so they were able to hire sooner. They paid their impact fees sooner, which then funds the CIP projects and so forth in the city. And then they also accelerate, that also accelerates sales tax collections by two months as well. All of these things are very meaningful outcomes, not only for the business community, but also for our residents. So what's next? What's upcoming? Well, we're not sitting on our laurels. I can guarantee you that. We just finished the creation of a new process. This was in May of 2023, and this is for commercial, all commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects. What we've heard from our customers over the last couple of years is that the site plan process was slow. It was cumbersome, and it was duplicative, and they weren't getting any value from that sequential step. So if you look at this top series of circles, it started with recruitment. It would go through if you needed a zoning change or not. Then it would go to site plan approval, and it would get approved. And then you'd go to that civil building review process, inspections, and occupancy. So what we did is collapse these two steps into one. So what that means is now everything comes in as one package. The site plan, the civil plans, and the building plans all come in as just one thing. So we're reviewing one thing all at the same time to gain that efficiency. And we expect that by combining these processes and eliminating that sequential step, we will save each and every project at least 168 days of process time and review time, which is very, very meaningful, and we're excited about this. So we've shared this with the development community, and the feedback has been very, very positive. In fact, one of our customers told me in a meeting, he says, "The day you sent that email out, you almost broke the internet, because it got forwarded around like a million times." So we're really, really excited about this new process. And as part of this, not only are we changing how we operate and what we do in our processes, but we're trying to inform the development community about what we're looking for. So you can see on the bottom right here, these other, these portions of the city, this is where a lot of commercial and multifamily development takes place. So we created essentially a FAQ section on our website, so the development community can go, "Okay, I want to build XYZ and canyon trails. What standards do I need to follow?" They would click on that, and it has everything that they need. It has the zoning requirements. It has all of that information. So essentially, now what we've created is an open book test, because we want to give our customers the answers before they make the applications. So we already have three, since May, which isn't that long ago, we already have three projects utilizing this process. And then as we move through, and we're going to be back in December to tell you and check in with you again on things, we'll share with you the data of how this new process is going, but we're super excited about it. So what else is next? Well, as I mentioned, we just did this ground-up improvement for commercial, multifamily, and industrial. And we also want to do something for the single-family residential community, development community as well. So we're going to have another kaizen event, which is an improvement event this fall. We're going to know it's going to be on single-family residential, but we don't have the topic figured out yet. But we'll have a readout for you on what we did and what the expectations of approval are when we come back in December. Another project that we're actively working on right now is the implementation of Acela, which is a system that we use. It's kind of funny, because Katie was rooting around the other day and found, is that a good word, rooting around, looking around? And found a study from 2006 that looked at DSD practices and recommended improvements to make us more efficient back in 2006. And one of the recommendations was a new permitting system. So I'm pleased to say, 17 years later, we're about to do just that. Acela is really going to transform our service delivery and make it a very customer-driven pull system, so customers can get information and make applications when they want to on their schedule. It is open 24 hours, not when we're here at the building. It's also based on self-help. They can go in there, get to their projects, get what they need, and understand what's going on. It will be great transparency into the process, and it will handle everything from application, the initial application, when the project is a gleam in somebody's eye, all the way through the construction process to when you request for a certificate of occupancy. Most notably, and we're super excited with this, about this, with our friend, with help from our friends in finance, we will be able to accept online payments, which not only was a national issue of national concern, but also came from our customer survey. So we're super excited about that. And Acela is going to go live in October of 2023, so we're actively working on it right now, and it will be going live shortly, next couple of months. The next thing that we're working on is a process improvement with customer service and phone calls. We have heard, council, loud and clear, recent input on this topic. Our data shows that 40% of all of our calls are to make a payment. Because Acela will accept online payments now, we are expecting a dramatic decrease in the amount of phone calls that we receive. But we're still obviously going to have plenty of other phone calls about other things, right? But we aren't waiting until October to address this matter. We are working on staffing solutions and schedules and actively making changes currently. Our goal is 90% of all calls to be answered by a live person, and the expectation is that all calls are returned within 24 hours, and that we're in the process of implementing it as soon as we can, or no later than July 5. And I'd point out that currently, 64% of our calls do go to voicemail, because most of those are about receiving payments, or trying to make a payment, rather. So with our next steps as well, under council policy direction, we've had some conversations over the time about some zoning ordinance text amendments. We are actively working on that as well. We have completed data research on each one of these topics, and we've done preliminary analysis and some development standard review specifically for use permits and business parks. We have engaged with the help of work outside legal counsel in order to help us generate all of this information that can move through the approval process. Our goal is to bring these forward on a cascading basis. We're not going to wait till all of them are done. And the schedule that we've identified is we're going to bring the revisions to noise standards to council in September, October. That one is done. It just needs to be advertised. We're making the revisions to use permits, and then also be allowing churches by right in every zoning district. We're expecting that to come to council in October, November. Council also requested that we create a business park zoning district. We are about halfway through that, roughly a third of the way, third to halfway through that process. We expect that to be council in December or January. And then in Mobile, if you remember, we had those conversations about Mobile. We're expecting to bring that overlay district, which would allow them to maintain a rural lifestyle, and that coming forth to council in January, February. We have collaborated with We have collaborated with the outside attorney who's working with us on this, and the schedule is doable. So I know Katie and I have said a whole lot of words, so here's the summary. Seventy-four, what we've accomplished so far, seventy-four percent of our customers thought it was easy to do business with us. As a result of electronic plan review, we're able to data mine and get real-time information, which helps us in data-driven decision-making that we did, simply did not have before. Examples of that was we've got the fifty-five percent reduction in those highest-volume permit lanes with the revisions to the preliminary plat requirements. We've saved two hundred and eighty, combined two hundred and eighty days and thirteen thousand dollars that our customers did not have to pay us. Right now, we're working on that new ground-up process for commercial, industrial, multifamily, which we're expecting to save a hundred and sixty-eight days per project. Working on the Acela testing, we're implementing the solutions for customer service and phone response. We're actively working on those zoning ordinance text amendments with outside legal counsel. So that's what we're doing right now as well. And then what's next is the single-family residential process that we'll talk about this fall, and then the implementation of Acela, which will be October twenty-three. So when you ask what, what are we doing, I think we're doing this, which is a lot. But we're excited to make these improvements because frankly, our residents deserve the best that we can be, so does the business community, and so does council. So Katie and I are here to stand for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, open for any discussion? Does anything popping up on the board? Councilmember Stip?
Thanks, Christopher and Katie. That's a lot of information, as you mentioned. I'm surprised, I guess, to a degree, but maybe not surprised, that the business park thing is coming back as late as it is. I thought we may have had more urgency on that than from the time we talked about it in February or January until seeing it a year later. But I get, everything takes time and whatnot. I would hope that if there's an opportunity to speed that up and maybe, because there's not a big urgency to get the churches pre-approved, but I think there is on this business park issue, so I'd
Sure, we can
Hopefully, like to see that switch, at least that's my point of view, because we've got a lot of those coming up. And then, of course, the question that I have to ask when we talk about all this is going to be, how are we measuring it? Are you changing your performance measures later on? It's kind of rhetorical. But, you know, we're, there's a lot of percentages, and there's a lot of stuff in here. When we talk about performance measurement, how are we really going about it? Because some of your performance measures were really about counting widgets.
Correct.
And now we can talk about measuring other performance in perhaps a different way, so
Yep.
Hopeful that we'll hear that in your later presentation in the year, unless you've got
Yeah, we've, we've been, Mayor, Councilmember Stip, thank you for the question. We welcome changing our performance metrics, because you're right, it has been just really workload indicators. We've been, we worked with Genogode to create a whole new set of those last year, a draft of those last year, so, which marry up very nicely to all the improvements that you're seeing here. So we will actually have, with EPR, with, now that we have this, we're able to see all the ins and outs and all of this kind of stuff. So yes, sir, we'll, we'll be happy to touch on that in December.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes, I just want to say I want to say thank you for putting it all together. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done and moving forward with the process improvement, so. I'm a practitioner in lean, so, yeah, I know it's a lot of hard work, and it helps with just all these efficiencies, trying to make us more efficient, and also helps with staff and morale and things like that as well. So appreciate all the hard work. It obviously shows here with all the data. So can you continue the good work? So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Campbell? Nope, not Campbell yet, go ahead.
I'm next.
You're up.
Christopher and Katie, I want to thank you both and your whole team for working so hard on these and getting these forward, because it does take a lot of work, I know, to improve, because you're trying to do your job at the same time, it's trying to think of how to fix things and change things. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the, probably the six months that you're saving on all these projects. So that is a big deal, and that will save money, time, so that is much appreciated. So just let your whole team know that was very appreciated for all your hard work.
We will, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
I've just got a question. Christopher, on your feedback for improvement and what you're doing, are you simplifying the online submittal process at all?
Yes, ma'am, we are. As a matter of fact, that's part of the, this one, the slide here is what you're referring to, Councilmember Campbell, simplify the online submittal process on the right.
Yeah, that's, that's the ones I'm wanting to speak to.
Yes, ma'am. The Acela project is going to dramatically simplify the application process.
That's just the payment part?
No, ma'am, it is not that
That's just more than that?
No, Acela is cradle to grave.
Okay.
From application to when the project is a gleam in your eye, all the way through the completion of construction. You'll be using Acela, so
I thought we were taking online payments.
Not yet, not in DSD.
I remember having this conversation two years ago, when someone came to pay for their permits, and they, the check was four dollars off, and they had to go back to Scottsdale, get another check, come back on another day to pay, and I thought we were trying to get that process going even then, but we didn't.
Yeah, we, it wasn't, it's, there's a lot of technical reasons, but yes. We're, we're super excited about doing it in October, because we're going to have one system.
I think it's really important that we do that.
One hundred percent.
If we are going to streamline, that's, that's really critical, because everything is electronic nowadays.
Correct.
It's not paper checks. Is there a time limit for a project to be completed when the developer is his own contractor?
Great question. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, thank you. That's a building code.
Oh, that's building code.
Building code.
All right, I'll address that later then.
Sure. But the answer to your question is, is long as they're actively working on the project and calling for at least one inspection every six months, then they can proceed.
Okay, so is there ever the occasion that we need to look at that? Because if it's just every six months, it could take ten years to build something.
It could take a very long time, yes, ma'am. We could certainly
Is that what other cities do?
This is a standard in the building code. It's the international building code.
Okay, all right. And then the last question I have for you, that you said it was two-point-five days for a permit, is that any permit?
Let me go to that slide for you. That is what we call the express lane permits. Sorry, I'm clicking through very fast. Let me find it. Which is production homes, as indicated by the little icon here on the screen, solar, and pools, pools and spas, and other kind of easy permits, like, like if you were going to put a electric vehicle charger in your house or things of that nature, those are pretty routine permit. So these high-volume, easy permits, which used to take us five to ten days, now take the two and a half days. So pools, spas, gas lines, barbecues, minor home improvements, a production home permit, things of that nature take two, take two-point-five days.
But adding like a bathroom or something, that takes additional.
That would probably, that would be about five days, yes, ma'am. Because that's actually particular to your house, and so you would have to have the plans drawn up for that particular house.
And that was a question that was just asked me yesterday about that.
Sure, about five days.
Okay, very good, okay. Thank you. I'm really excited to see how you continually improve, because as long as we have a good communication line with our developers, they're going to want to stay in our city, and since we have, we're now positioned to continue to develop, it's really important. So I want to thank you and all of your staff, and
Yes, ma'am.
Katie, thank you very much, Katie, for everything.
Vice Mayor, you're up.
It doesn't show in the thing anymore. Yes, I wanted to also reiterate appreciation for you dedicating a staff person, Katie, to do this process. It's not a convenient time for you, extremely busy. I know it was a huge sacrifice, but it's so essential to the overall operations. Could we take a look at slide ten real quick? Of those types of customers, where do we find that it takes the most staff time or the greatest delay, or which are the most problematic for you?
That's a great question, thank you. I would say that the ones that take actually the most time is single-family projects, because they have to go through the plating process. Oftentimes, it can be outside utility companies that we have to work with, you know, the non-Goodyear utility companies. There's lots of easements, and there could be a lot of off-site improvements as well, extending water and sewer lines. So those are frequently the most complex. And then the second most complex would be some of the commercial projects, some of the larger-scale commercial projects because of their utility needs.
Okay, so the steps that you've taken to combine process with the site review and the packet and all that addresses those various areas?
For, it does for commercial and multifamily, yes, ma'am. The single-family process, we're going to look at this fall. So we'll be, we'll be checking back in with you in December, and we'll highlight what we've done to make improvements on that process as well.
Okay, very good. Certainly on slide thirteen, you got great survey results, you know, a lot of, a lot of good feedback, certainly areas for improvement, and then you had some testimonials, as it were. It seemed then the constructive feedback that you got were about the site review and the lack of technology. And I guess I have to ask, if it came up in two thousand six and now fast forward to two thousand three, why such a significant delay?
Great, great question. I think it was, there was originally a CIP project, it was in, I think, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, for the enterprise, what was it called?
System, yeah.
The, the overall enterprise system, and the permitting system was going to be a component of that. And then we pivoted away from that and then implemented the improvements for, with Munis and others for finance, and then this Acela project is using that same capital money that's been carried over since that time.
Okay, very good.
Hope that answers your question.
Yes, I, I know that when you've got citywide systems, they have to be able to talk to each other.
Correct.
It's, it's probably more complex. There's been discussion lately about the five-hundred-foot notification. I know there was a question that came up from the dais about, is that a strict answer or not? Have we, has that question been answered yet, or has that been evaluated?
So the public notice requirement by state law is three hundred feet. In Goodyear, our ordinance requires five hundred feet. So we go five hundred feet from property line to property line. If council so directed us or thought it was a good idea to expand that a thousand feet or seven hundred and fifty, whatever the number was, we would have to make an adjustment to the ordinance, which we could do. But we want to treat all projects the same regardless of where they're located in the city.
And have we done a survey about what other comparable cities have done in terms of their notification?
I don't know, other cities.
I wanted to comment on the, the five-hundred-foot notification. I did speak to the city attorney about it, and he's going to do some checking into it for us.
Good.
So thank you for the question.
Okay. And then lastly, we're working on design guidelines, and
Yes.
That's a big, big project, and hopefully the legislature won't thwart us in that effort. But how will you integrate that into your process?
So great, great question. That's a, we didn't include that in, obviously, tonight's presentation, because it's not a process improvement, that's more of a requirement, so to speak. But there is a process improvement component to it, because we have heard from the development community, like, that maybe our requirements are very clear in some instances, and so we want to provide additional clarity. So our consultant, Michael Baker, who's working on that, is going to be doing a better job of helping to define those things along with, with council's input. So it's a separate project that is not necessarily process-related improvement, but it is something that we're moving forward and will be getting a lot of input from.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Stip?
You know, the, the discussion about the distance, the five-hundred-feet, you bring up a good point. Even if we leave it at five-hundred feet, if there's language that we currently have in there that says that there's an option to go greater, if our intent is to try to keep it the same for every single project, then we need to remove the language
Agreed.
That gives us the option, because I think that it provides a false narrative to the public to think that we are just picking and choosing, which obviously is not your guise, let me rephrase that, which is not your intent.
Yes, sir.
So I, I think we've got to make sure that when we look at these text amendments that we're doing, that we, once the attorney does their thing, we've got to get this stricken from there. The other, the other question that popped up kind of as the result of all this, one of the slides that you showed on the phone use.
Sorry, I'm moving fast.
No, it's all right. Yeah, that one. We, we presume, I guess, that the majority of the calls going to voicemail are about payments. Do we really have an accurate measurement on that? Because what is really disturbing about this particular slide is sixty-four percent of all the current calls go to voicemail. And that, that's kind of a customer service issue, that if everybody calls and it's always going to voicemail, whether they get returned or not within twenty-four hours, there's probably nothing more frustrating than you're making a phone call because you have an urgent need, and then it's going to voicemail. So when you talk about measurements and where you're looking at, once we get this online payment thing, I hope we continue to measure how many calls are actually going to voicemail and what's happening. I understand that that was an internal decision about how we responded to phone calls that were made, and you guys kind of collectively are pushing forward a different, different way to go through that. But I, I think the greatest complaint that I have heard from multiple people, not just about the city of Goodyear, but just kind of the development community in general in the valley, is no one's working at their desk, so I can't get a hold of somebody when I need to. And I think we have to, we've got to figure out where that delicate balance is between, I can answer your question right now versus later. So continuing to measure this, hopefully will provide us some improved data later on, once you do this July fifth
Yep.
Implementation, so, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Listen, I appreciate the information, it's great discussion, but when it comes to distance, my preference is if five-hundred feet is not enough, maybe we change the ordinance to make it larger, but we've got to treat everybody the same. I don't like flexibility in there personally, this as well, because this area is X, maybe we should make it six-fifty. If five-hundred's not enough, let's expand it to six, let's maybe spend some, whatever the case may be, but be consistent on that, so everybody is treated exactly the same. I appreciate all this. The one thing that I like in this is that I know the state legislator's been pushing, you know, on the by-right bills and et cetera, to try to take the zoning issues away from us, design guys, et cetera. I don't want to assume anything, but I imagine you're sharing some of this data on what we do when you get down to the hearings with our state legislator to let them know that we're working hard to try to, you know, make things a little streamer liner, because there's nothing worse if they, if they pass something down there that's going to end up taking all this away from us, so.
Yes, sir.
I think it's important to make sure that message is, is taken. I don't know what our other cities are doing, but maybe we can be the lead. That would be nice.
Yes, sir.
With that, thank you for all you do, and just keep up the good work. With that, let's see, we don't have anything else. We were going to go, the executive session's been pulled, so with that, there's no further business. I'm joined.